So then I called Tony and said, "Okay, it's your turn to do the ordinance." He says, "Whereas thereof," and all that legal mumbo jumbo, and they got what we have to do. So...
And you don't know how it's determined as far as?
It's up to you guys.
Okay.
Whether we do another district or whether we just add two.
Gentlemen.
Either way.
Thank you.
Later night, we're saying, "Just do two more at large."
That's what I would do, too. That makes the most sense.
It's going to be the least painful.
Yeah, you would think.
Yeah.
I did not know that. That's interesting.
I knew there's a lot of things we have to change at ten, and so I was starting to look into it.
You know what that means? Just more signs around the election time. As if we didn't have enough the last time. How are you today?
Good. Weather's beautiful. Sure was hard to leave the campground coming here.
We were on pontoon for most of today. It was really hard to get... It was time to get off the water, but it wasn't easy.
Right. Well, no, it's never time until the sun's going down.
Right. It was good.
It's packed over there this week?
It was over the weekend, last weekend. It's thinned out right now. It's pretty nice. But, uh, yeah, it was wall-to-wall. We got there Friday night, and it's about Sunday midday. They, most of them, pulled out.
Right.
We moved to a different site. We got one that kind of overlooks the reservoir, hook up on a bluff. It is nice. It's really a nice spot. Lots of wildlife. Saw a fox walk by the other night. Walked by me like I was not a problem for him.
Okay. I have 6:30. This is a working session for the common council. There will be no action taken tonight. This is an informational meeting. And Councilman Spencer has asked to present some data, so you won't go ahead.
Sure. All right, see if all this technology works.
I was on vacation, Scott. It should work.
I think there was a 20 yesterday in the stack, wasn't there?
From us?
Yeah.
I think we were doing some wiring, weren't we?
Okay, well, first, thanks for giving me the opportunity to present this information. This is a big, this is a big decision for us. I mean, this is a decision that what we decide will last for the next forty, thirty, forty, fifty years. And I take it seriously. And I want to especially thank Roger and the task force because it forced me to take a look at a lot of things that I probably never would've had the reason to look at. And as I mentioned in the last council meeting, I take it seriously that if I'm going to make big decisions, that I'm going to do my work, to do the due diligence, to try to educate myself on their decisions. And what I'm here today is just to present data. I'm not proposing a narrative. I don't have a proposal. I'm not trying to compete with the proposal that's in front of us. I'm just delivering you the data as I have come across it and as it has been given to me. And different people will judge that data differently, all based on our own experiences. But this is just a data dump, and I will do my best to try to keep it as that, just presenting data. Obviously, I'm human. I've looked at this data. I've drawn some conclusions, but that's not my purpose tonight. My purpose is just to supply you data. This is, in essence, the act. An increase in water rates for all water customers, $1.49 a month, spending an additional $166,000 a year out of our lit safety funds, two new debt obligations of $8.5 million, which results into a property tax to all Bluffton property owners, depending on their assessed value, somewhere in between $8 and $138 annually. No new township resident burden, and to lock in a township contribution for the next ten years. The reward: We ensure two full-time staffing for two in and two out at fire structure event. We solve the west side of the tracks issue. We improve first-engine response times in north and south of town with two new buildings. And we update age, outgrown, and efficient fire and police buildings. It's a big deal. It's a big decision. And as I looked at that, well, first, this is what Donnie brought to us. He brought to us in the last budget meeting. He brought to us at the start of this conclusion, and I take it very seriously. This is the NFPA 1710 standard, and, you know, it clearly says that a three-person crew cannot engage in interior firefighting until a second unit arrives to accomplish the OSHA requirement for two in and two out. I run a manufacturing company. We deal with OSHA requirements every day. I take them seriously. We've got a committee, a safety committee, that takes them seriously, and we spend a lot of money to resolve OSHA requirements. So I don't take this lightly, and I intend to fix it. So nothing here should be insinuated that I don't want to fix this problem, because we should, and I want to. So when this, I just want to kind of take you through my journey. When this started, my focus was on our agreement with the fire territory. It didn't last there very long, but that's where it started. And so I think, from a contextual standpoint, it's important to understand kind of how I got to everything that they're going to see. And so I looked at other agreements, and you can Google these, and they pop up. And, you know, one of them was the New Haven-Woodburn, and they've got three townships in that agreement. And one of the things about that agreement is that everyone in that agreement has a uniform tax rate. Again, this is just data. I'm not proposing this. This is just data. And as I started to go through other agreements, that repeated itself pretty consistently, that there was a uniform tax rate with all the parties involved in the territory. I was especially interested in the New Haven experience because it's close, it's local, it's something I could go see if I wanted to see it, and so I reached out to a number of people to talk to them about the New Haven experience. Sorry. So New Haven currently has an agreement with Adams Township, and it's a fire EMS agreement. So they service both fire runs and EMS runs. Their area is about 30,000 residents. They've got 21 career staff. They've got three fire stations across the protection area, and all of their career staff are cross-trained in fire and EMS. They've got 10 personnel that are certified to ALS level or paramedic, and their EMS calls run about 2,000 runs a year. They've got ISO rating of three, and their governing board consists of the mayor, two city council members, a township trustee, and advisory board member. And Bob, or Bob Bird is a former councilman, board works member, and a firefighter. And I reached out to Bob, and I talked to him about this. And, you know, how did they get there? You know, what drove it? And what drove it was EMS runs. It wasn't fire runs. It was EMS runs. The number of EMS runs that New Haven was having to do in their surrounding area just got to the point where they couldn't, they couldn't afford it. They were just doing too many EMS runs, and something had to change. And so they created this protection agreement. They rolled in Adams Township, and they revised their leties so that they could fund both fire and EMS. They actually closed one station. They built a new station. And at that point, I almost dismissed this. I almost said, "You know what? This doesn't apply, because we don't, we don't have a combined fire and EMS department." So I almost sort of walked away from New Haven, but I didn't. And again, each ship has six career staff on duty. They've got a two-person ambulance crew and a four-person engine crew. So six people. Each ship has a district chief, and again, this is their current, their present state. Now they're moving to a new structure, and what they found was that solved the situation for a short period of time, but then the problem continued because the city of Woodburn also couldn't handle all their EMS runs. And so they ran into the same problem. EMS runs were just continuing to overwhelm the system. And so Woodburn actually approached them and said, "Hey, can we look at doing something different? Can we roll into your territory so we can, you know, take all of our staff and try to get some economies of scale across the staff?" And so this prompted me to contact Chief Hale. And I had a long discussion with Chief Hale, and basically what I learned from Chief Hale was pretty much similar, was a lot of the things that we talk about here is we can't get volunteers, and this is just the only way that financially we can continue this service to our communities, that it's just not financially viable long-term. So now they've got four townships, two cities, and they will soon form this territory. And some of the data that they presented in their public meetings looked like this. New Haven's call volume over the, over the years is up 61%. Now, that's got EMS in it, okay? Up 61%. Woodburn's volume, up 67%. Again, it's got EMS data. It's not just fire data. They had several public hearings and public meetings. In those public meetings, it was Jeff Bellamy, who was their legal representative, who helped them form the territory, form the governing bodies. I talked with Jeff. I talked with him with a number of issues about what their governing board looks like, you know, how that was, how that's going to be put together, you know, who's going to submit the budget to Gateway. And we talked through a number of issues, and he repeated the same thing that Bob Bird and Chief Hale told me, was that this is, this is what happens when communities finally realize they just can't afford EMS any longer. There's a financial impact study by a group called Financial Solutions Group. That's our equivalent to Baker Tilly. I contacted them. I talked to them. I went through all their data, and they pretty much presented the same information to me. And here's the, here's the questions, here's the issues they faced. Decreasing volunteer numbers over the past decade, increasing call volumes for both departments, that's New Haven and Woodburn, and they had to increase the max levy to support the long-term operation. This is what they're going to. Again, New Haven will remain paramedic ALS care. Woodburn is going to go from basic ENT service to full paramedic ALS care. They'll have full-time staff, and they'll all be cross-trained across fire EMS, and they will also have increased daytime staffing for fire inspections for buildings and the communities. So that's what that community is working towards. They laid out their capital improvement plan. I'll go through that. The number of personnel. Here's all the financial data to cover that territory. This is what the salaries look like, and if you notice, all the firemen are either firemen paramedics or they're firemen ENTs. You know, they, they... This is, this is their schedule. Looks pretty familiar, an A, B, and C schedule for their fire stations with four firemen ENTs and two firemen paramedics across all of their stations. They've got some full-time 40-hour individuals. Again, feels pretty similar. This is their total personnel package across that territory. This is the financial side of it. So this is the assessed values that they looked at across all of the communities. And this is the, the tax rate that they will be going to, which is a uniform tax rate across all the entities at 40 cents. Again, not proposing this. It's just data. That's where they ended up. This is their current tax rate. So again, all of these are moving to 40 cents, and you can see it ranges from three, less than three cents up to over 40 cents, but at the end of the, at the end of it, they're all going to 40 cents. And again, this is the percent changes. This is specifically for Jefferson Township, where they looked at the different assessed values and what their impacts were there. For Jefferson Township, it's going to go from nine cents to 40 cents. It's going to increase 30 cents. So that's the New Haven experience. So then, when I got through that, I started asking myself, "Well, what, where are our trends? What is Indiana trends? What do trends look like across the nation? Is this distinctly different? You know, do we sort of match this trend?" So this is Indiana. This is National Fire Incident Safety Report, something like that. I may not get that exactly right, but that's, it's pretty close. This is how the data is presented, and for EMS, fire departments average 65% EMS runs. This is some of our data that, that I got off Fox. So this is 2015 data, and even though we're not a combined fire EMS department, we do do EMS runs. In 2015, we did 48%, 54%, 55%, 57%, and this is what our trends are. Our EMS is trending up, not by a lot, but it's trending up, and our fire runs are trending down. Again, it's just the data. This is FEMA data, so second bullet, 64% of calls are EMS runs, falls right in line with Indiana, falls right in line with New Haven and Woodburn. 4% are fire, are fire-related runs. And then down here, this is, this is time of day. This is when runs occur. And I took some data that Donnie gave me, and this is our time of day data. We'll look at this again in a minute, but similar trend, right? Similar shape to it. So again, we, we're following the norm. And again, just same data, different chart, 64% are EMS runs. This is another survey, the ISO Fire Service Index. They did a survey, 69% are EMS runs, 3% are actual fire events. So again, falls in line with the FEMA data. And again, same chart, based on the different categories. This was their recommendation. If your department doesn't currently offer EMS services, you should start that process. You should start to collaborate with your EMS agencies, share data. They're encouraging that movement, and that is their best practices, recommended action. Here's another slide from the National Fire Protection Agency. Medical aid calls for, across fire departments over the last 40 years are up over 400%. Fires are down over 55%, and for what it's worth, false alarms are up over 200%. So again, all this data, no matter where you gather it from, says the same thing. New York City Fire Department, their medical runs are 75%. Of their runs are medical runs. They've been doing this for a long time. Here's their trend lines. Medical runs up, fire runs down. This is their expense line. Heavily expensed on the fire side, less so on the medical side. Again, just data, not making a judgment on it. And this was their long-term, when they looked at the data, this was their long-term conclusion, that their traditional resources, the fire companies, suggest significant reforms are needed, and that human resources provided for each type of emergency should be rebalanced. Basically saying that medical runs are dominating the runs, and at some point, you need to start to look at rebalancing that data. This is a Washington Post article. Again, fewer than 4% of fire department runs are fires, while medical aid has quadrupled. And they attribute that for a number of things. Buildings are constructed with fire-resistant materials, and clothing, and curtains are fire, made of fire-retarded fabrics. Sprinkler systems and smoke detectors have moved that data, those numbers down. And that's a good thing, right? We don't want fires. We want these reforms. We want to drive the fire numbers down. Sprinkler impact, the properties that are sprinkler-protected, that usually, depending on the number of sprinklers, between 70, 90% of those fires were greatly controlled by the sprinklers. Again, it's a good thing. I'm glad we're doing that. If you walk through the apartment complex at Premier Flats, I mean, I'm not a fire guy, but they've got fire call boxes as soon as you enter the buildings. You can walk through each of the apartments. There's several sprinklers in each of the apartments. It's a good thing. So then I started looking at, okay, what, where should stations be? How do people do that? Again, no disrespect to the, to what the task force has come up with. I just wanted to do my own work. And this is a summary of the data that came out of the task force, that most of the runs are on the Harrison side versus the Lancaster side, and most of them on the east side of the track rather than the west side of the track. And the proposal was to put a station at 200 north and 200 south across the two townships. So I, again, I wanted to ask myself, I mean, how do people do this? And so I came across this article, and one of the things that, you know, they talk about is the use of the GIS system to lay maps out. And I thought, "Well, that's kind of interesting." And this is sort of, you know, what they tell you to do. Create a GIS map, evaluate historical and relevant data, you know, show your, your emergency hotspots, what the drive time analysis is, overlay that on your GIS maps, and then review that data with your community leaders. I hope that's what we're doing here today. So I did that. This was, this was one of their studies. I, I don't even know what half this stuff is. The black box are incidents. The stars are, are stations. You know, again, just a picture. And then I came across this from the U.S. Fire Administration, and where they talk about site selection and the two methods, two methods for justifying a new station. First method is time and distance, and the benchmark is that 90% of emergency calls are met within eight minutes. That's the standard. If you can't meet that standard, it suggests you, you need another station. So that's one of their first benchmarks. Again, they talk about laying down these, these points on a GIS map. Their second standard is to establish a, to establish a criteria where there's more than, based on a certain number of calls in an area. They, you know, for example, if there's two, more than two calls per day in that area, maybe a station is required, right? So you look at what's called hotspots. Then I looked at the ISO standards. So ISO standards drive insurance rates. They've got a little bit different standards. They've got a first-engine due within one and a half road miles, a ladder service within two and a half miles, and their bare minimum is that there has to be a station within five miles, where there's no ISO rating at all. The NFPA 1710 says the first-engine travel time is four minutes. So I looked at that. And I asked myself, "Well, what's four minutes mean in terms of miles?" I didn't know, but it turns out there's a formula to that. It's called the RAN formula. And there it is. T equals .65 plus 1.7 times distance. So I said, "All right, well, what's four minutes?" Four minutes is about two miles. So that's what four minutes equals to. So here are all the different standards. We had some ISO standards. We had some NFPA 1710 standards. And so I went about the work of figuring it out. And at first, I laid down a map, and I drew big circles. And then I realized, "You know what? I found this, and I, I learned that circles aren't the right thing to do." People use diamonds, and use diamonds because traditionally roads run north and south and east and west. So I'd use diamonds. So I took our GIS map. This is, these are our townships and who covers the townships. No surprise here that Bluffton covers Lancaster and Harrison. I looked at all the other stations in the county, and I laid down that minimum protection area, five-mile diamond buffer. I even took some stations that are outside the county but cover part of the county, and this is what it looks like. So these are the volunteer coverage, and you notice the gap. And there we are. We drop right in the gap, almost perfectly. And last year, according to the data, we did 344 runs. So that's minimum coverage, right? So that's what the minimum coverage looks like. And this is what our coverage looks like with the two new locations, right? So we moved north a little bit. We moved south a little bit, so... This is back to the same chart, which I, again, I thought was kind of interesting, that they attributed that this peak is due to cooking fires. That's when people were cooking, and that's when most residential fires occurred. Again, I don't know whether that happens here, but that's what this data shows. And so then I looked at our data, and again, I don't have the evidence of this, but it's interesting that we've got a peak at breakfast time, peak at lunchtime, a peak at dinner time. Don't know. Well, then that sort of asked me the question, "Well, if, if fires happen in the home when you're cooking," then I thought, "Well, maybe we ought to look at how dense residential properties are, and how closely packed are they?" Because that's where the fires were happening, in the homes. And so Mike Lotz and I, so gave me this chart, and the most dense area... It is right here. So just on the west side, south of the roof. So I looked, you know, and then I tried to ask myself, "Over the, over the 344 fire runs, what was a fire run?" And, you know, this is how they kind of rank it. We didn't have data for 2019. So Donnie gave me a report, which was the structure of fire runs across Wells County. So he gave me five years' worth of data. And these are all the runs. This is just a portion of it. And it lists the city that responded to the run, and again, there's some mutual aid runs here. I didn't try to factor that in. I just looked at the Bluffton runs. So I went through all five years, and I took the address, and I mapped it on the GIS map. I took every one of them. Took me a little bit, but I plotted every one. And this is what it looks like. So you can see that our hotspot is right here. Happens to be right where the densest population is. And again, it's just the data. I just plotted them. There was 150 that were assigned to the, to the Bluffton department. Again, there's mutual aid runs. I didn't try to factor that in. This is Bluffton, Bluffton runs. So fire structure runs account for approximately 10% of our total fire runs. We basically do about 30 fire structure runs per year, and we do about 300 runs and we do about 300 runs per year. Again, just how the data breaks out. So again, I laid in those five-mile buffers. So here's our, the existing five-mile buffer against all of the runs. All of those same fire structure runs. And we missed a few, but we catch almost all of them. And then I laid the two new stations. And I asked myself, okay, well, what's the impact of those two new stations? And the current location misses one run on the north side, and misses three on the south side. So that's, that's the impact against that data of the two new stations. And then I looked at the 4.3-mile buffer. So this is the eight-minute response time to 80% of the incidents. Right? That's the NFPA 1710 standard. And the RAN formula says it's 4.3 miles. So here that is. Here's the 4.3-mile buffer existing station. We missed 12 out of 143 in the territory, or 91.6% coverage. It meets the standard. That was the first checkpoint. If you, if you missed 90%, you probably should add a station. We get almost 92%. So then I looked at, well, okay, what if we built the two new stations? And that helps. We get up to 93%. Roger introduced in the last council meeting that there was some consideration to a Spring Street location. So I looked at that. And that helps a little bit more. I guess it's up to 95%. So we've sort of gone from 92% to 95%, depending on what locations you want to, you want to add. All of them meet the standard. This two-and-a-half-mile buffer, this is engine data, ladder engine, and it deals with five or more buildings that are 35 feet or taller, or buildings that take 3,500 gallons per minute. I couldn't do that. I wasn't smart enough to do that. I didn't know where to get the data, so I don't have that. So then I looked at the four-minute response time data. Same, same overlay. Two-mile buffer. We missed about 20 locations. Seven north, 13 south. But then when you lay in the proposed stations, you see that we miss all of these locations. So we've gone from missing relatively few to now missing quite a few, because remember, our hotspot is right in this area. And this is sort of the blown-up view of that. And just a couple of things to point out here. There are a bunch of runs right here. I think there's like eight to 10 runs right in this location. And that's the trailer park off of 124. There's also a bunch of runs right up here in Capri Apartments. And then, again, I mean, you can see all the runs down here in downtown. And again, same, same diamond buffer, just a little bit blown up. Over here at Payton's gets a bunch of runs. I've talked to a bunch of people, that sounds like warehouses are pretty significant. There ends up being a lot of runs at warehouses. I've heard that from several different people that I've talked to. And then again, you know, you start to overlay the two proposed locations, and you see the areas that now miss that buffer. So then I looked at the ISO standards. This is one-and-a-half-mile buffer, so this gets a little smaller yet. We missed 34 locations over the five years. And again, same analysis, right? If you move the stations north and south, a bunch of locations fall out of the buffer. I also looked at the Spring Street. That helps. Helps a lot. You catch quite a bit of them in the upper half of the buffer. And again, current location. New locations, you know, you pick up a few in the north and south. Some of them don't get any benefit from, from either. But you lose 125 of the locations according to the mile and a half buffer. If you move, if you go to the Spring Street location, you lose 20. So again, big benefit to moving that location. Spring Street, you still miss the trailer park, and you still miss Capri Apartments. And I also looked at two-minute response time. Same thing, right? I mean... So then I wanted to do a little bit of drive-time analysis. And I wanted to ask myself, well, okay, if we move stations north and south, where do we get the benefit? And pretty much the dividing line is Dustman Road. But at Dustman Road, the current location and the proposed location are about a watch. You get there about the same time. So in order for the north location to have a benefit over the current location, it has to be north of Dustman Road. And I looked at, there was several places that they were concerned about. And again, just sharing data, not drawing conclusions from it. Norwell High School. Current location is 7.4 miles. Proposed location is 6.2. Austin is 6, and Uniondale is 1.9. So you get 1.2 miles improvement. Christian Cares along Dustman Road is a watch. So Bel Brook, the church, it's, it's the same drive time. River Terrace gets even more improvement from the north location. You get 1.7 miles of improvement to River Terrace, so certainly a benefit there. But again, I would go back to this standard, two in and two out, right? I mean, to get to the standard, both locations have to get there. So even though you get to River Terrace quicker from the north location, you can't enter the building. Because you've got to wait for the station down south to get there, to meet the standard. So unless both those stations are, have enough crew to send a full contingent, you have to wait for both stations to get to the location. Then I looked at the train analysis. And there was a lot of talk about long trains, and I wanted to educate myself a little bit about long trains. And here's the data that I found. Super-long freight trains are from 10,000 feet to 16,000 feet. Standard freight train, five to seven. One mile is 5,280 feet. So the super-long freight trains generally run between Chicago and LA. And that's because cargo comes in at Long Beach, and it's got to get to Chicago to go through customs. So that's where the super-long trains are. Now, I've heard anecdotal stories about some really long trains here. So I'm not dismissing that maybe there's a long one coming through Bluffton. But if you go to indiana.gov, they'll tell you the average train is a mile, and they generally run about 30 miles per hour, and it takes two minutes to clear. CSX technologies are getting longer, and they've gotten up to 68, 33, and up to 5,500. So they're getting longer, but they're not three miles. They're a little bit over a mile. So I looked at that. I laid in a train a little bit over a mile on my GIS map. And I tried to figure out, okay, when does it become a problem? If the train is stopped, right? So if the train just crosses wildly, we've got a problem. If it's stopped there. Because now we've got to go all the way down to 200 south, and we've got to go around. And if it stops just north of Lancaster, we've got the same issue, right? So that's, that's kind of our concern. But the train could stop down here, right? I mean, the train could stop anywhere. So it could stop and shut off the 200 south location. We don't know where the train's going to stop. And I calculated it. So this is the calculation from the current location. Should the train impede, dent it across the tracks, it takes about six miles and about 11 minutes. This is from the proposed south location. We would expect it cuts off about two miles. It does, right? We moved it two miles south. So takes about eight minutes. This is from the north. Takes about nine minutes to get there. But again, two in, two out, right? So both stations have to get there. If we leave from the current location, not saying we should, I'm just saying if we leave from the current location, we get the full contingent there right away. So you almost have to combine the two response times to get your full contingent. So to get a four-man crew on scene, the two new stations to the south side where the train stopped saves 93 seconds. Not saying that's not insignificant, that's just, that's just what the data is. So then I asked myself, well, what if the train is moving? What's it do? And again, average train is a mile long, takes about two minutes to clear. So based on the RAN formula, we're about .4 miles from the track, and we get there in 1.33 minutes. So if we go to the track and we just happen to catch the train at the worst possible time, we've got to wait two minutes, and we're across the track in 3.33 minutes. Train could be longer, but that's what the average train tells you if the train is moving. So then I wanted to look at a little bit more of this data, try to understand a little bit more. And I asked Donnie, and I said, you know, what does a fire structure really mean? Is that, is that, is that a fire? And how Donnie described it to me was a smell or bell, which made a lot of sense to me because I could relate to that. So if it's an alarm, smell is smoke, there's an arc, there's a spark. You know, that's a fire structure run. And I get that. It could be a fire. We have to pretend it's a fire. We have to plan it's a fire, and we've got to send enough people there, assuming that it's a fire. And I, I want to do that. And then I started asking myself, when did they occur? You know, again, just out of curiosity. So I mapped them all out. I went through every one and mapped them on a calendar. And what I learned through this process, that our worst day over the last, over this five-year stretch, was July 28th, 2015. I don't know what was going on July 28th, 2015, but we had three that day. It was the only day we had three. There was a smattering of other days that we had two. And I went through every year and mapped them all out. Again, just from my normal understanding. And then I said, okay, well, let's look at these by month. And again, that July month of 2015 was our worst month over the last five years. We had 10, 10 fire structure runs, so smell and bell calls. And July of 2015, we had 51 runs then. Since 2015, we've been averaging about 25 runs per year. We had seven months there wasn't a single fire structure run. And then again, I looked at hours, hour per day, seeing it start a couple of times now. 45 of the 150 runs are the commercial buildings, which again, by code should have our fire suppression systems. And then I didn't have this data, so I, you know, I started asking myself, well, how many do I think, or would the data suggest, would be actual fire events? And so I'm guessing here, because I, because I don't know, so. And so I looked at the FEMA data and the ESO data, and that data suggested to me that about three or four per year would be actual fires. Is that fitting the ballpark?
Without studying the numbers, I'd hate to make that remark right now. I mean, how many full-blown, fully-evolved structure fires do we have a year? Half a dozen is probably safe. How many rooms and contents fires do we have? How many? I'd hate to look at that and answer that question.
Alright. And again, this, this is the data, the Series 100 data. This is not our data. Don't have our data. 36% are structure fires, 20% rubbish fires, and vehicle fires and other. So then my next, you know, what I wanted to look at next was station size and land use. So this is our current location. We're on a little over one acre. This is the recommendation. And the recommendation is, again, well, currently, we share an acre. The recommendation is for five and three acres, so a total of eight acres. I calculated, I, I don't have the blueprints, but just by looking at the GIS data, we're in the 6, 6,500 to 7,000 square feet. And the two new locations would be 43,000 square feet. And the central location that was proposed was 32,000 square feet. And none of those had allocation for EMS. So, you know, I asked myself, okay, how does that compare to the region? And I think this is the proposed north location. I don't know this for a fact, but I think this is a location off Commerce Drive. It's about 2.6 acres. This probably isn't exactly accurate. This is just what GIS shows of the, of the land in Spring Street. I think we're talking about doing some other things, but it, GIS says it's 204 acres. So I looked at New Haven, because that was sort of where my journey started, was New Haven, right? Their main location is on 2.27 acres. And it's about 15,000 square feet. I was able to get a little plot of it. There's a building. So 15,000 square feet in New Haven. There's the building. And as you can see, it accommodates EMS and fire. For the record, I haven't known whether those days go all the way through or not.
They do. They have doors on both sides. The left, the left side, the right does not. The right's the one-sided.
This, I believe, this is the downtown location. It's about a half acre, according to the GIS map. And I believe this is the Adams Township location. And again, it's about a half acre. And I looked at Huntington. So this is Huntington's Etienne location. It's on about one acre left. 15,000 square feet. This is their condo location. I gave them credit for the basketball court and the tennis court. 1.6 acres. This is the Decatur station. The Decatur station sits on a half acre left. And it's right in the middle of town. So I kind of summed all those up. And again, this is just the data. Current locations. Proposed locations for the two, the two stations. Decatur, New Haven, if you combine all three locations. Huntington, if you combine their locations. And then land, land usage. Populations are down here. The other thing that's interesting to note about this is, so Decatur has a hospital-run EMS that's out of the, that's a moral hospital. New Haven runs their EMS, and Huntington comes out of the hospital. Fort Wayne's got a ton of stations. I didn't go through all of them. This is one of them. One and a half acres, 7,000 square feet. So then I wanted to, I wanted to look at new, new construction. To kind of see how we compared the new construction. And I came across the Zionsville location. It's on 2.7 acres. This is their layout, it's 16,500 square feet. This is the job description for their firefighters. Again, their paramedic EMS, or paramedic firefighters, or fire EMS, or EMTs, I guess I should say. Carbowella Station in 2016, it was 16,000 square feet. And then I found one in Whitestown, Indiana. Brand-new station, 23,000 square feet. And I was like, okay, I want to understand what Whitestown is all about. Because I found a station that's close to the one that, that we might be looking at. And just to note, they do EMS. Not only do they do EMS, but their fire departments stay with their, their patient all the way to the emergency room. They don't just transport, they go all the way into the emergency room. This is their station that they're building. It's almost done. Um, one day I went and I visited the station. I walked through it. I met with the fire chief and walked through the station. Um, again, their, their firefighters, they've got fire paramedics, they've got fire EMTs. They've got two stations and they're ISO class two. This is their department. It's a big group. Man, they've got over forty career firefighters in their group. It's a big group. Um, this is what Whitestown is doing. They're averaging twenty to twenty-five percent growth over the last few years. If you go across the last eight years, it's seventeen percent growth. According to their data, they're the fastest-growing region in the state. Uh, again, I went down there, there's construction going on everywhere. He told me there were six developments going up and five apartment complexes. One of the developments had over six-hundred homes in it. Um, this is the growth rate of the different counties. So they are in Boone County and according to this chart, they're growing at twenty-two percent per year. Right next door is Hamilton's County, they're growing twenty-seven percent per year. And around them are number three and number four and number five. So they've just circled Indianapolis. Um, and for the record, Whitestown is growing faster south.
Because of Trump's support.
Just, I heard a story that everyone grows, Whitestown is growing south. This, this chart isn't exactly accurate, but this is where they are and they annexed a bunch of land out there and now basically their, their city line puts right up against Zionsville. So, I mean, you literally, right in here, you leave Whitestown, you enter Zionsville. You almost can't tell the difference. And then you enter, you leave Zionsville and you enter Carmel. It's just, you go through about a hundred roundabouts as you head that way.
Been there.
Um, this is their current station. So their current station is on two acres, uh, not very big. Um, it's not much bigger than our station is currently. I drove around town, this is their police station, pretty nice police station. This is their town hall. I looked at their assessed, um, property tax rate. It's good reason they can afford these structures. It's pretty expensive. Um, again, I met with, with Josh, the, the fire chief. He walked me through, um, asked a lot of questions, asked him to send me some additional data. He has sent me that, I'm kind of going through it now. Uh, but the building accommodates ten firefighters, two in the battalion suite and seven officers in the administration staff. Uh, they're all in, looks to be about six million dollars and that does not include the land. So, twenty-thousand square feet, um, six million dollars. He basically said, good thing we got it, we're finishing up because if we were to reprice it now, it would be a lot harder. He sent me a copy of their strategic plan. It was written in two thousand seventeen, they're just now getting their station finished up. Um, and here's what they did, right? They, they were a little bit more clever, they didn't use diamonds, they used these, they actually calculated the, the drive times. I'm not that good. I couldn't do that. Um, but similar format, they looked at hotspots, my hotspots aren't nearly as pretty, uh, but they laid their incidents on the GIS map. So, sort of same thought process. Um, I've got their building plans, I'm happy to share that with anybody who wants to see it, but they do not have separate male and female quarters. Uh, they, they use what's called a jacket and gill concept. So there's two bunks, they share one bathroom. And so, if you want to separate genders, you se- you separate them in one of the jacket and gill rooms. They don't have completely separate quarters. Again, not advocating that, that's just, that's just what they chose to do. Um, so then I, I searched for something even bigger and I did find a twenty-seven-thousand square foot building in Chicago, they just broke ground, and it is their largest fire station in the city of Chicago. Twenty-seven thousand square foot. That's about as much as I'm gonna say about Chicago. Donnie attached this to one of her, his emails, so this is a statewide survey of fire stations. Interestingly enough, I didn't realize this until after I got back from Whitestown, that's the Whitestown Fire Station up there. I don't know whether they sponsored this or not.
Yes.
But this was really good data. I mean, I, I looked, I spent a lot of time with this data. Um, and so one of the things I looked at on this data is I looked at population and the number of calls. And I calculated that on, on a runs per thousand basis. And Bluffton's Fire, I call it the Fire Run Impact Ratio, I may get that term up. Um, we come in at forty-seven per thousand. And it's, it's ninety-eight, you know, if you're rank order from top to bottom, it's ninety-eight out of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven, the stations that reported it. That's not judgmental. I don't want a lot of runs, right? We don't want fires. And I want people to go to a fire safely. That's not my point here. That's just where the data falls out, is that we end up at ninety-eight out of one-twenty-seven. Um, then, you know, I looked at, you know, if we really move to the full standard where we have six career fire people, uh, on all of our ships, we, we start to approach a career staff. Um, and again, that's the standard. We probably ought to think seriously about that. So then I looked at, I sorted out all the other stations, I just looked at career staff stations and again, where our run ratio was and we would be second to the bottom, only underneath the city of Bloomington. And, and to be clear, I sorted that also while not doing EMS transport. So again, I tried to be consistent with it. And then I threw in career and volunteer, just to take a look at that mix in case that changed it. And this is where we, we showed up on the, on the run ratio data. Um, then I took a look at the data and I looked at all the full volunteer, all the part-time and volunteer, all the career and volunteer, all the career part-time and all the career, that's different staffing models that that sheet represents. And then I took each of those and I calculated the average population, the number of calls, do they do EMS transport and what the, what the ratio would be. So, this is not per thousand. Um, so, if you look at kind of where, we would be point oh-four-seven, okay, in terms of this number here, that would be our equivalent. So if you look at us, I mean, we're right in here, our calls are right in here, we do not do EMS transport, so we're closer to this, and our calls are less than this number. It's short of point oh-five, it's point oh-four something. And you look at the staffing model of that, and again, it's just the data, right? You can see what the staffing model looks like. Not judging it, it's just what it is. So then my question was sort of like, well, who, who do we look like, right? I mean, who do we benchmark against? And, uh, I came across this, this was an article that talked about the top thirty growing counties in Indiana. We, in this article, we did not make the top thirty list, Adams County came in at twenty-four. Um, this is our population data from two thousand eleven to two thousand nineteen. Here's Decatur's data, pretty similar. And then here's the same chart, we looked at this chart down in Indianapolis, this is, this is our chart. So, Allen County is the eighth fastest-growing county. Um, we've got ninety-two counties. Blackford's the slowest-growing. Wall Bash is number ninety, Randolph is eighty-nine, Jay's eighty-seven, Grant's eighty-eight. So we got a lot of this really slow negative growth. Anything under forty-one is negative growth. Uh, and we come in, according to this chart, a little different chart, Adams County comes in at seventeen, we come in at twenty-two. So then I went back to this, this form and I said, okay, feels like we're pretty similar to Decatur. And so I wanted to check it against this, this chart. So fourteen-thousand, uh, Decatur's sixteen. Coverage area ninety-six versus eighty-two. Calls, now this would roll in our EMS calls, right? Six fifty-eight, Decatur five-seventeen, and if you, ISO ratings of four, salaries are similar and the staffing is similar as well. Um, and again, for me, I always like to say, who do we, who do we kind of look like? And that's what the data shook out when we look at Decatur. Um, then I wanted to take a little deeper dive into EMS service. Now, I've, I've got a meeting next week with EMS chief and Seth Whipper and Trent Cooper, who does their data. I've not had, I've not had the ability to meet with them yet. Um, this is the Indiana Code. Um, county may not provide authority to contract for EMS service within the limits of any city without the consent of the city. So theoretically, again, I'm not proposing it, theoretically Bluffton could choose to take on EMS because the city has to have our consent, the county has to have our consent. Um, so Indiana mandates these counties insurers EMS, some do it through private services and private hospitals. That's what, um, that's what Allen County does, they do it through the Three Rivers Ambulance Authority. New Haven doesn't, but, um, Fort Wayne basically does. Others use a county hospital, that's what Adams County does. Wells County, we use this, this combination of two not-for-profit organizations. And what happened is when Lutheran Hospital sold, we got nine million dollars from that sale and we put that into a not-for-profit organization, a foundation basically, and think of it as an endowment. That money was put into that foundation for the purposes of funding EMS. This is, EMS covers the whole county. Um, this is back when I was doing circle maps, right? I've learned better after this. But their standard is four minutes, six minutes and ten minutes. And I won't go through all of that, but that's kind of the EMS standard. Use the RAN calculations, you can calculate number of miles. And so I, I did the same analysis. This is what the buffer diagram looks like for EMS. This is, um, for three-point-one-five-mile buffer. This is a two-mile buffer. So you can see, because we have so few locations, we get significantly less coverage for EMS. And they're doing twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand runs a year. So they're doing five to ten times more runs than what we're doing. I also looked at hours a day because I looked at hours a day for the fire runs and I wanted to see how they, do they overlap in areas? Um, and they do in some areas. And then I was curious about incident rates. So, this is fire deaths in Indiana, fire deaths per hundred thousand. Um, again, it's a good fit, we don't have a lot of fire deaths. Um, this is occupational injuries. So I looked at how many occupational injuries because I was curious where EMS was situated relative to our industrial park and was there anything to learn there? Uh, heart mortality, heart disease mortality, and again, I'm not, I don't know whether there's a relationship between EMS run and heart disease, but, um, this is, this is injury rate, so this is not a death rate, this is injury rate. And foundries which we have, warehouses which we have, plastics and rubber industry which we have. And this is the structure of the EMS system. So if you've got this endowment, I call it an endowment. It's nine million dollars from the sale, that goes into this Wells County Health Service Foundation. They provide grants to Wells County EMS, uh, so that's how the structure works. This will lose money, this will give a grant and help cover the costs. So because they're not for profit, I get access to the tax returns, so I did. So this is Wells County EMS for two thousand nineteen, they lost sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, that includes this five-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand contribution, that's coming from the foundation, okay? So to be clear, I mean, without that contribution, they would lose a lot more and they would lose exactly this, they would lose six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. So they need that five-forty-eight to minimize their loss. This is the Health Services Foundation, you get their tax returns as well, so I did. Um, the Health Services Foundation in two thousand nineteen lost a hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars. So because the Health Services Foundation is losing money, now the foundations are asking the county to start to kick in, right? Because the endowment's not keeping up. Um, and you can look at that because they've got total assets in their tax returns. So I did. So, this is what the foundation's assets have been doing over the last twenty years. Now, they're invested, okay? So, this big dip, this is because the stock market, it got hammered. And, you know, so not all of this is operational losses, some of this is investment losses. It's kind of helped to pull those data, pull that data apart. And this is what they've contributed. So this is the amount of grant that they gave EMS year-on-year and it averages about five-thirty-three. I don't know what it's gonna be this year because I haven't had a chance to talk to those guys. So, this is just data I've been able to gather myself. Um, this is the salaries for EMS personnel, it's about a million dollars. And this is how their expense goes out. The large bulk of their expense is employee expense. And this is their staffing. So they got sixteen full-time, twenty-three part-time. Uh, I don't know how their schedule works, I don't know whether it's an ABC staff, is that what they're doing?
ABCs.
ABC. So again, I haven't had a chance to talk to Rick about that. Um, this is their roster, so this is, this is our roster for fire. They've got three EMS vehicles and they've got one in reserve and that's basically if something breaks down, they sort of take from it, so they always have three vehicles running. A fourth vehicle never really runs, it never really runs as a fourth vehicle, it's just sort of there as a reserve vehicle. So, um, and then, again, just data, I'm not trying to judge them. EMS runs, we do about three thousand a year. So that's taking our EMS runs, adding it to theirs, um, they lose six-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars. And if you kind of run that math out, it's about two-hundred-and-six dollars per run. Fire, if we fully staff, uh, including our debt that we would incur, that's the cost per run for a fire run. It's just what the data is. Um, and then I've got a whole bunch of slides on tax fairness and this was sort of ended up being my least concern, um, after I got through all the rest of it. But just to back up the EMS a little bit, just so you understand how, how that works. So, there's an Osien Station, there's a Chester Station and there's one here on Spring Street. So what happens is if an EMS leaves Spring Street, somebody from Chester or Osien comes to Bluffton. So they, they backfill Bluffton, so Bluffton always has a vehicle. That's how that process works. Likewise, if someone leaves Osien, then someone goes and covers Osien, right? So they're just constantly bouncing back and forth the coverage. And I don't have the run data, so I can't give you hotspot locations, but what I'm told is the bulk of the runs is in Bluffton. So what happens is the Bluffton EMS leaves and then somebody, the Osien or the Cheston uh, vehicle comes to Bluffton. So Bluffton always has a vehicle in town because that's where the bulk of the runs are. And I'll, I'll run through this quickly. Again, this is not the emphasis of, of my presentation, but this is where I started. Again, this is not the emphasis of my presentation, but this is where I started. You know, our budget for the fire department's one point two million, that does include the hydrant rental, and I know there's some discussions whether that should count or shouldn't count for the record, like I left it in. Township contribution, at the time that I ran this report, it was two hundred and sixty-three thousand. I know there's some discussion about, did we get all two sixty-three and all that? This is just the math, right? It's twenty-two percent. If you were to, this is the levy of the township, it's seven cents. There's also a capital levy for equipment. I didn't include our capital fund, so I didn't include that levy. So again, I'm trying to keep things as much apples as apples as possible. We don't have a levy specifically for fire, because it runs through the general fund, but if you were to calculate it, which you can do, if you take the one point two, subtract out what the township contributes, and you calculate it against our assessed value, it comes out to seventeen cents. So the difference is seventeen cents versus seven cents. Again, I'm not making a recommendation, it's just the data.
Can you put that back up when you're finished?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So the data changes a little bit depending on whether we add the additional firefighters to get to the NFPA standard, right? So if you go up to that NFPA standard, then our budget climbs to two point nine million. And if you were to calculate a flat rate, if you were to do the same thing that New Haven, Woodford, and those townships did, again, not recommending it, just saying if you do the math, that calculates out to a thirty-five cents type trade, if we were to approach it the same way. If you look at just assessed values, it's sixty-five to thirty-five. So, you know, if you kind of just look at different percentages and what the contribution looks like, that's what the numbers rolled out to be, based on current years and years. So then I looked at all the different proposals to fund the stations, twenty-year bonds, these fifteen-year bonds, these, and I calculated all that data out, and if you roll that incremental cost in, and you look at the current contribution from the townships, and the proposal to add an extra firefighter, what does their contribution turn out to be with all of those other additions added in? So to be clear, this is both stations and getting up to the full seventeen-ten standard. Then the contribution, depending on which financing package we pick up, and it ranges from twelve percent to almost sixteen percent. And again, I mean, pick a percentage, here's what the number would be. And again, no judgment here, this is just, just the data. Right now, if we add the additional five, that's our new personnel services, yes, township's picking up a part of that, that's just, that's what the services are. To get to the full standard, that would bring our services budget, personnel services budget up to almost one point seven million. And just for sake of comparison, that's twenty-two percent higher than the police personnel service budget. So this is the current complete police personnel service budget. If we got to the full standard, this is what the fire budget would be. This is the fire hydrant data. This is another study I looked at, I won't go into this, but that's, that's my data.
Data, yeah, that's accurate.
I'd like to respond, not to debate, but rather give a perspective from the time we spent as a task force. Commend Scott for a lot of work, draw, though he suggests there aren't conclusions there. The data would suggest, if you spent that much time with it, you'd have to have some idea of what you thought. One of the differences between the presentation tonight and where the task force spent its time was we essentially looked at the entire fire district, the territory and the city as equal. I brought with me tonight my home insurance bill. I, I'd have to suggest that regardless of where you live, in regard to Lancaster, Harrison, Bluffton, you probably take out fire insurance. You probably have homeowner's insurance that is intended to cover what if. We discussed in the task force that the fire department is essentially our first line of insurance. They're the ones that will save lives, they keep the building from completely being burnt down. If you own a business, they will be there to help, hopefully, in time to save that business. The number of runs is reassuring, I hope it's reassuring to everyone who lives in this community. The fact is that looking at the number of runs isn't the only factor we needed to look at as a task force. We needed to look at everybody in the territory being protected as equal as we could. Now, if everybody was going to be equal, we'd probably have to have about fifteen stations. So that's not going to happen, that can't happen. The territory does not, though we are to protect it, if you look at the data, the territory, the townships outside the city do not receive nearly the actual service as does the city of Bluffton. City of Bluffton receives the lion's share of service in terms of calls. The, the data looking at the number of firefighters and the runs ignores, for the most part, one very important part, and Scott included that as he looked at Adams County, but the square miles, we cover ninety-six plus square miles. Twelve miles north-south, eight miles east-west. Presently, the task force concluded, and we spent a lot of time on this, that neither our firefighters nor our residents were adequately protected. That was the thrust of the entire proposal, was felt that two stations helped out. There was some discussion of the EMS. We briefly touched on it, but learned quickly that our EMS is a county-wide system. It's not like Allen County. It's, Allen County, I'm told fifty years ago, broke up into these segments. And I don't know if fifty years is correct, but they did. Ours is a county-wide system. I am talking with Rick Pippen... Pippenbury, sorry. Talking with Rick suggested that to pull any one segment of that three-legged stool away would destroy the county-wide system. His words, not mine. It would do that because Bluffton is about forty-four percent of their business, their costs. I also learned, and looking at their information, and I want to make sure I get this right, the EMS service loses, I believe it was three hundred and twenty-one dollars per billable run. Now, billable run is where they transport. If they come get you and you don't have to be transported, it's not a chargeable run. It's, it's, that's where the influx of foundation dollars are so important. A part that I'm concerned about is not that the data isn't what the data is, because I don't question Scott's accuracy on that, I think he needs to be commended for all the work he did. Question is this, I think, does that change what has happened? Does that change anything in adequately protecting all of the fire territory as best we can and adequately protecting our firefighters? The issue was raised with our present proposal, that with two stations and two firefighters per station per shift, you've got to wait on the second engine to get there. There's a big difference from now is, you know it's coming. Presently, we don't know when on-call are going to show up. And I would ask that everybody factor that in to your thinking, because the volunteer days are over, for the most part, though it's been suggested that a volunteer department might cover Norwell schools closer. People that I think we've got to count on are those that we know are going to get there. I, I hope that it was one standard that Scott used that had to do with an eight-minute time arrival. If you're not there in eight minutes, you're, was kind of like, if you're not there in eight minutes, you're not serving them, or something, is that a fair analysis, fair statement?
I think that's, I think that's fair.
We believe that the two stations get us awfully close to that for almost all of the territory. It gets us much closer to it in terms of Norwell schools, gets us much closer to it in terms of Craigville, gets us much closer to it in terms of the area of Panado that we need to serve, where it's still going to be a stretch, we're not going to make it there in that length. It gets us much closer to many areas. One of the things that hasn't been discussed by anybody is our obligation for the state park. The danger there is pretty significant if a fire ever starts. Again, I don't wish the debate, I wanted to say, now, wait a minute, I guess my question is, where we go from here, the, I believe that when Scott meets with EMS folks, he'll find, as I did, that there would, and with county folks, that for the most part, there would be almost unanimous opposition to us taking over an EMS service. If we use the Spring Street site, we're right next to EMS, both of the stations are being designed with the possibility of expansion, should it be needed, should this ever come, that everyone sings off the same page, that we ought to take over, or we ought to become more of a partner with EMS. But I would ask us to not use this as a delay, but hopefully we'll be moving forward soon. Thank you.
Scott, you're leaving next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
My meeting's on the, a week from today.
Yeah, okay, we just... It would not be my desire to do any action next week, but perhaps the following two weeks. That gives us more time to absorb. We've had a lot, a lot of stuff thrown at us. And if we get into issues like this, it's a hot potato one, and politics starts playing a role there. And if you jump into the politics of what to do with EMS, I would recommend you know how to swim, because politics can skew things, I mean, they do all the time. I do want to share a couple of numbers with you, and I pulled this off the countyoffice.org. There is one, the emergency services per one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight people, and one emergency service per ninety-one square miles. And Indiana Wells County is ranked sixth out of ninety-two counties in emergency services offices per capita, and tenth in ninety-two counties in emergency services offices per square mile. So if you look at that, it looks like we're getting pretty good of the coverage that exists. But we've been at this about an hour and fifty-three minutes. I think we need to think about this and say, okay, what does the data, what does the data mean in terms of our decision-making? For example, in an ideal world, if we use the data, but we don't have real estate available where we need to be, and that's part of the problem in all this process, at least as I see it. But I'd like to hear from you on, in terms of how, I think we need another session, very frankly, to digest.
I just want to make sure everyone knows, the data is inbox, so anyone can go to box and work through it.
What are your, what are your thoughts? I mean, we've seen a lot of paid the top tonight.
What would an independent third-party study look like? Paid study by someone who does this, this is what they do. They look at communities, they look at emergency services, they look at response, they look at all the factors that go into it and compare it on a national level, or even a state level. Is that a ridiculous concept to consider?
Well, Scott, you're in so much of this data.
Yeah, I think we already just did it.
We've got to pay free.
There are people who do that. I mean, I'm not suggesting that what I'm presenting is the right data, it's just the data I had access to. So I can tell you, Whitestown used a third-party, I didn't ask them who they used, but they, they went through that process. I certainly would not suggest that you guys rely on me as the expert, I'm just, I'm just an aggregator of information.
I, I want to interject. Mayor asked a task force that he appointed, and it was said last meeting, mention made of business experience and so on, we all have, many of us have that. But that task force, I thought, was as representative as the community, of the community, as it could be. And it was not a Bluffton task force, it was a task force to look at fire protection for the fire territory and Bluffton. I, I would hope that you've all looked at that data carefully as well. We didn't go into it as deep in the meeting as Scott did, but if you look at that, I hope you would value their thinking.
I just need time to soak it all in, and I appreciate the task force, and Andre, and Scott for everything, and I've made some phone calls and done some work on my own, and I just need to kind of, it's just a lot, the whole thing's a lot, and size and scale and everything are my big concerns, build-outs, square footage is a big concern for me, and how the details, where the big money comes from. Every detail you add to it is a big expense. So I look at the capital expenditures, and that's kind of the things that I'm looking at closely. So to me, I just need time to just weigh it all.
Anyone who wishes, I would think that Don and Chris would be... Anyone who wishes, I would think that Don and Chris would be more than happy to walk you through the physical plan, actual floor plan, and talk about why the why...
And hopefully, we're also looking at trying to relieve some pressure on the police station. The police station reminded them to sort out loss and all this, and getting some early real meaning.
Yeah, that's my thing, is the next, the next, the next. It's not just the police, it's the sewer. And to me, we're on a needs basis in this community, in my opinion. I mean, if it's not a need, I'm not voting for it. So everything I look at on a major project has got to be a need, and it's got to be a need only. So something like that, but, I mean, we're spending enough money, and we know there's a lot of huge expenses coming, and they won't stop coming, because they just, there's a lot of moving parts in the city. So I just need some time to kind of...
Yeah, I guess I'm insane, but Josh is in. It's a massive expenditure, and the need is there. Right now, my head's in the weeds with all the data and the square footage, and what makes the most sense, and, you know, what are other people doing, and how are they doing it, and, you know, the tax rate difference, or the contribution differences between the townships and the city, wrestling with that a little bit, wondering if it wouldn't be a better model for everyone to pay the same rate.
Not to debate, but to clarify. If you remove the hydrant rental fee and you add in the additional amount the townships would be paying, that disparity is not significant. I hope you'll look at the numbers.
Scott, you ran the nump, I mean...
Yeah. Again, my goal here was to give data, not to generate a debate. I mean, I think if you don't include the cost of the building and the cost of the additional firefighters to get us to the full standard, that's true. But once you do lay those costs in, and that data's there, you can look at it, I ran every scenario possible. When you lay those other contributors in, the disparity gets bigger. So...
Kind of the same thing as everybody else. It's a lot of data. It's good. I appreciate, again, you know, the work of the task force and everything that Scott's done. But it is a lot of data. I don't want to make a rushed decision, like I said at the last meeting. I'm very interested to hear what Rick has to say. So Mayor, like you said, I would appreciate another meeting.
Like I said, next week, you know, we're not going to do anything.
Yeah.
But if you feel like we need another meeting, then I'm fine with that. I just, I want people to do the best they can in terms of decision-making. You know, I don't want to, you know, after these fire stations, Bill, gee, I'm sorry, I booted this. At the same time, I don't want us to keep kicking the can down the road. And I think we can get this done, but it's going to take an effort on all of our parts, and I'm including myself in this, to make sure if I have a question... Oh, yeah, Scott covered that in his data. Okay, it's in box, right, Scott?
Yes.
All these numbers are in box.
The whole thing's in box.
And you may have to call Scott, say, where in H do I find this? You know, when you look at all the data that was given up to us tonight, and so Scott may be his own worst enemy when this is done.
I'm fine to meet again. Is that you proposing, Mayor?
Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't we do this next Tuesday evening? Why don't we talk about in the next meeting? Roger, you're going to be gone.
I'm going to be gone too.
And so we'll talk about getting another meeting, so, all right? Roger, you okay?
Sure, that's great.
Okay. Okay, we will now adjourn to an executive session to talk about an economic development opportunity. So if we want to go downstairs, you should...